Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, December 17th, meeting of the District 57 Board of Education. If I can have a roll call, please.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Here.
Member Choak?
Here.
Member Qualcheck?
Here.
Member Letto?
Here.
Member Nelson?
Here.
President Fay?
Here. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, and now we welcome our friends from Westbrook School to talk about our portion of her graduate work at Westbrook.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here with this lovely crowd. So first and foremost, I just want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to be the principal at Westbrook. The first three or four months have been absolutely spectacular. Our staff and students at Westbrook are so special, and it's definitely a special place. And I just feel fortunate every day that I get to wake up and go to work there. So I just thank you for believing in me and giving me the opportunity. Today, we're going to highlight a video and spotlight our students, and we're going to be really focusing on collaboration. Danielle and Carl last year decided to implement our portrait and try to bring a component to life every year. Last year was empathy, this year is collaboration. And so everything we do, we're trying to embed collaboration in it. And so three things we're going to highlight today is we're going to highlight hot reads. So it's a Westbrook tradition where we bring students into the gym, and every staff member brings a book, and we pick out of a hat who's going to read, and it's a surprise for the students. We build it up. It's super exciting. And this year, a lot of our books and all of our books thus far have been around collaboration. So we read the book, kids get excited, we're all there together experiencing that as a collective school. And then we talk about how collaboration is woven in throughout the book and how it's a theme. And then we take that theme and we expand on it in the classroom environment. So that's super special. And then along with that, we've added, we started a song together. It's called Together, actually. It's about, it's from songs from schools, and we sing it at every assembly. So if you ever get an opportunity to come to a hot reads program, I invite you all. We have one this Friday at 9:50 and 1:50. You're more than welcome to join us. But what we do is we read the story and then we sing the song together. And then that song is also woven throughout the school, and so the classrooms are actually singing it. So any given day, you can walk by a particular classroom, whether it's EC, kindergarten, first grade, and they're practicing and singing the song, which is great, just to kind of continue to bring that collaboration to life. And then just special shout out to Sarah McGovern, who is really implementing that in our choir, as well as starting the school year off in first grade with the first few classes and music, practicing that song together. The second item that you're going to see in our video is our Principal Advisory Council. So Carl and I get the opportunity to meet with two first grade classes every month. We've met with every class so far, and we're going to do that again in the second part of the year. So during their lunch period, they eat with Carl and myself, and then we do an activity. The first activity of the school year was we partnered with Lemons of Love, so collaborating with a community organization to give back. And so we spend time just getting to know the kids, working together, partnering with them, but then also providing, you know, some tangible items that we can pass along to that organization, which is super special. So that's been a lot of fun. And then the second part of the year, I'm working with Jason a little bit to figure out how we can get some student feedback around our school and the passing of the referendum. So that's going to be a lot of fun, and I'm excited to get some of those results and share them with you, because I can only imagine the exciting ideas that our kids have at Westbrook for the new school building in a few years. And then the last component is our family reading night that we've had this school year. We had it two weeks ago, and the turnout was spectacular. It was just an amazing experience. We had a lot of community members come out. We did an ECK for 45 minutes, and then we shifted and first grade came in about a half an hour later. And I would say each event had about 150 families. They brought their pajamas, stuffies, they sat on the gym floor, they read a lot of books. We read, I read a book aloud with Carol Capra, Carl read a book aloud with Carol Capra. And it was just a really good collaborative environment with the community and a lot of fun. So those are just a couple of things you're going to see in the video. It's been a great first few months. And then as we kind of progress through this school year, you know, we're really working on taking that collaboration aspect of the portrait and building in to the classroom environment, not only just talking about like the hot reads and the activities that we're doing, but also thinking about how we can embed that in the curriculum and talk about it on a daily basis. So I appreciate you letting me come here and talk tonight, and I'm excited for you to see the video for our students. So there it is. And I just want a special shout out to Carol Capra for being instrumental in the family reading night, Kelly Schneider for being instrumental in just creating the hot reads on a monthly basis, and then Sue Sipko, just putting everything together. She's been tremendous in working with me and onboarding me just as a new principal, along with Carl Anderson here, who's been spectacular and a great partner for me. I couldn't do without him, so thank you.
Thank you.
So any questions?
Does anyone have anything they want to share? Yes, super adorable. Thank you so much for coming out and sharing that with us, and it's so glad to hear that you're experiencing the magic of Westbrook in your first couple of months with us, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It is the happiest place on earth.
I would agree, yes.
And I actually want to give you an early winter break gift by saying, you can go home, and you can watch the rest of the meeting online.
Okay.
No, but don't we think they don't want to sit in these chairs until nine o'clock? I think it would be wonderful for you guys to go home to your families.
That sounds wonderful, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
All right.
Yes.
I will definitely do that, yep. And I'll connect with Jason about the levy.
And cheer for Jason when you watch the tax levy online.
Yes, 100%.
Cheer, yell, we want to hear it on your drives.
All right, thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Well, if you're going to watch the tax levy, you better log on as soon as you get to the car, because we're going to start it right now. Ready for you, Jason? So before we get to you, Jason, if I can have a motion to enter the hearing on the 2024 tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Choak?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Letto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. Okay, now if you would refresh our recollection about what we talked about just a few weeks ago.
Well, I was a bit inspired by Westbrook, so I'm going to sing a song about the tax levy. No, you don't want that. Thank you. We are here to talk about the tax levy tonight, and yes, we talked about it in November. It hasn't changed, but I will just go through some of the major points about the levy, talk about it a little bit, and answer any questions you have. We know that the levy is definitely a very important thing that we do each year to ensure revenue that we receive at the district level. I did hand out, and it's online as well under our department, just some FAQs about the tax levy, just in general. Feel free to read at your leisure. Yes, all right. So just some vocabulary words, and I'm just going to point out a couple, but each year we levy or ask or request revenue through the county for our school district. And then we are approved for that levy, and that becomes the extension. The extension is how much money then we receive. So we request or levy, and then we receive it, or that's the extension. And we're going to go through today just a little bit about the process and how that works and what we're looking at. Before we jump into any specifics, let's talk a little bit through just why it's important for us. We do receive, over 80% of our revenue is through property taxes. And so it's important for the district to ensure that we're receiving the revenue that we can through that process. And so we look at how that works within our district. The issue is that we, there's a formula in place to figure out how much you can levy. The problem is we don't have all of the parts of the formula at the time where we need to levy. So we do look at historical data to help us estimate what we should be levying for. So this year, this chart shows historically, if you look at the two gray rows, the top one is about how much we've requested each year, the bottom gray row, the fourth row, is what we then received. And so you can see how much we've requested and how much we've received each year. This year, we're looking at, we're using a CPI, Consumer Price Index, of 3.4%. That's, that is known, that we know that for sure. And so with that, plus looking at any new growth or new construction in our district, so that is anything within our school district boundaries that are coming onto taxes next year. And so it's, sometimes it's a timing, and that is something we don't know. We don't know exactly what's coming on. We can estimate, we can look at prior historical data. We've received, there's been new growth anywhere in the last five years from $500,000 one year to $11 million one year, how we received. And it's, it varies greatly these last couple of years. So this past year was $500,000, two years ago was $6 million. So it can vary greatly. So what we, what I do then is put in CPI into the formula, and then I put in new growth, and I'll put in something that makes sure that we can capture any new growth that we would receive. So I'll make sure that that number is high enough so that the formula will capture that. And so as I put in all those numbers, you can see on the chart that what we'll be levying for is 4.77% higher than what we requested this year. Anything over 5%, you are required to do a hearing, the one we're doing right now. We always do a hearing. We have before I got here, and I think it's a good idea. It helps with transparency, everybody knows what's going on. So I would always do a levy, but, or a hearing, but even though it's below 5%. But we did stay below 5% this year. The last two years, because CPI has been 5% for the school district, it's been over 5%, but we get 5% in the school district, it's been higher than 5%. But this year, it's at 4.77%. The, this chart shows, so 4.77 is for all those capped funds, so all the funds that you see on top, mainly our ed fund, O&amp;M, which is operations and maintenance, transportation, you know, the retirement, social security, IMRF, all of those funds are our capped funds. We also receive our bond and interest fund through the levy. That is something we don't ask, whatever our bonds, our outstanding bonds are, and whatever that annual payment is, the county knows about it, and they give us that amount. What's different this year, you can see, last year our bond amount was just under $760,000. Currently, and I say currently because it's going to change, currently the county has down that we're, excuse me, that we will have a bond payment of just over $500,000. That's because some of the bonds fell off in December, meaning that we're going to refinance them. And that'll take a little bit of time, but in the meantime, the bonds that we just sold in December, or on December 5th, we agreed to, and we're closing on December 27th, those will be added into this before taxes are paid in the spring. So, so the $505,000, which looks like it went down 33%, that's numbers that is just because that's what they have right now, and so that's what we use, that's what we fill out and tell them, but that number will be higher, and that's all part of the referendum and what we've told the community. So I circle that, I want to make sure we know about it, because it does look like an interesting number when you're going down 33%. This is something new, so for all of you who've heard the tax levy presentation before, this is one that's going to be new for you, because there's a new public act that asks us to share at our levy hearing or at a presentation, the last three years of our operational fund, the amount that we have in those funds, the balance at the end of the year. And so what this is doing is if you look kind of right in the middle of that chart, you'll see the yellow, and it says point, I think it's point three, or point two, it's right about point three, thanks, it's far away. Actually, I could just turn my pages, I guess, here. But it, what they're, what they're looking for in this public act is they want to ensure that districts don't have two and a half times what they need in those funds. So for example, if we're going to spend, you know, 40 million in those, in those funds, do we have 80 plus 20, so do we have 100 million in there at the end of a year? That's just an example, we don't spend 40 million in those funds, but it's an example of what it can be. And so we, or we could spend around 40 million, but that's just an example. So we are nowhere close to that. We do not have two and a half times, we don't have one and a half times, we don't have, as you can see, we have about point three at the end of the year. And so that's just the number that we're looking at. I will present this each year, but it is something where there are districts that are able to save and have that much money. A lot of times, they're saving for a reason, they might be saving to then put on in addition or do some construction. We are not at that ability to be able to save that much money. So we won't, that shouldn't be an issue moving forward, but I will always come back each year and have a chart like this per the law. This is, just so you know what the tax levy certificate looks like, it'll be signed, and then this is what we send in for our levy request, and then they utilize this to then determine our extension. The way that we have it, just as a reminder from last month, is we levy for all of this, if we're going to receive less, we most likely will, we will, that whatever we receive less will come out of the education fund. So when I levy, I make sure that we have what we need in all the other funds, and then the rest we put in the education fund, knowing that any money that's less will come out of that fund. Timeline, we've done a lot of these things already, the estimated levy was approved in the November board meeting, we had our notice put in the newspaper, we've put it on our website as well, we're right now at the hearing, and next will be, we'll file it with the county after approval tonight. And so next steps is really just, you know, what we did in November, and then the next steps is tonight, but, you know, so the voting on the 2024 tax levy resolution and reduction resolution as well. All right, questions? I know you heard a lot of it last month, but.
Does anyone have anything they want to add, ask about? We have talked extensively about it, as you mentioned, so, okay, I think we're good. Thank you so much. At this time, are there any comments from the public about the tax levy? Seeing none, if I can have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Member Choak?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Letto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes.
And that brings us to community comments. The District 57 Board of Education welcomes community participation. In an effort to both listen to our stakeholders and keep the meeting moving, I want to remind everyone of our public participation procedures and guidelines, which is available in Board Policy 2:230. Individuals wishing to address the Board of Education can do so during the community comments portion of the agenda. Individuals should provide their name and limit their comments to three minutes. Please remember, this is not a dialogue between you and the board, the board is in listening mode during this time. Individuals wishing to contact the Board of Education are welcome to do so via the District 57 website under the Board of Education tab. Individuals should behave with respect and civility towards others and abide by Board Policy 8:30, visitors to and conduct on school property. Are there any community comments at this time? Seeing none, we will move into our staff and superintendent reports, starting with the 2025-26 student fees.
All right, levy, now fees. So this is a memo, we're not voting tonight, we'd bring it, I'll bring it back in January, but this is about student fees for the 25-26 school year. And so I've brought forth keeping the fees the same as they've been this year with one exception, school locks, which as far back as I can see, which is school year 2010, 2011, locks have been at $5. They have gone up in price over the last 13 years, and so we're increasing that price to $6. The positive is that, I know, the positive of that is that it used to be that a lot of students would use two locks, they now currently use one lock at Lincoln. For the most part, there are some students, I think, who do choose to have a gym lock, but most do not. Excuse me.
It says $5 still here.
Oh, no.
I thought it was $4 before.
Oh, no, I thought they were only doing one lock, and I thought the price was different.
No, it's supposed to say six.
See, we all thought it was different.
See, I had it as a question mark, and I checked it, I am sorry. Well, what are the memos, eh? Oh, that it's just increasing, it didn't have a price. I will update that for the, what we are going to look to approve, because it is $6, I can tell you that for sure. The other thing I was going to mention on fees, and I apologize about that, not getting changed, just because I've gotten the question a couple of times, is for things, so transportation fees, I've gotten a question from some parents, and just want to make sure we're all clear, those fees do not cover the cost of transportation for the district. So they cover, I'd have to look, but it was about half, I think, last time I looked, if that. So it's just something to note, because I think some people think that that covers the entire cost for transportation. So that's something that I wanted to note there. Everything else, any other questions, I guess, about all the other fees?
Just to clarify that, when you say the transportation fees do not cover the cost, what you mean to say is the district pays additionally on top of what the parents?
Correct. So we receive revenue, the parents will pay, and we receive all that in revenue, what we pay to our transportation company is a lot more than what we receive.
Right, right. So not to say that, you know, any additional funds are due on top of this fund?
Correct, thank you, thank you. No, we're not collecting anymore, and we're not changing the fees at all, it just helps to subsidize some of the cost of their transportation.
Any questions or comments about that? Jen?
I don't have any questions, I just want to make sure, so in the memo, attached is the proposed fee structure for the 25-26 school year, is that?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, it says 24-25 in here.
Man.
And then at the?
I wonder if I, I think I just updated, uploaded the wrong document then, because I had it perfect.
And then the bottoms, yeah, the sheet, and then the bottom?
Is missing that, I see that.
Is?
I apologize.
26, okay, just, I, okay.
Yep, I will update that for next time.
That's fine.
No fees are changing, except for the lock, going to $6.
Perfect.
I apologize.
No, no worries, I just, as I was reading, I was like, wait, I just want to make sure I was right, okay.
That's okay, I think it got up to, yes, because I had, many people read over it, now I'm, yes.
Chris, go ahead.
So I, I love the fact, you know, on behalf of our families, that we're not raising the fees again. I am curious of two things, though. When is the last time we did raise fees? Before I was on the board, I know.
It's, and before I was here, too. So it's been, it's been a while.
Obviously, our costs are not remaining flat, so how long, this is a hard question to answer, but I mean, at some point, there's going to be a time when we won't be able to keep sustaining that, I would imagine.
It, it's twofold, I guess, there, because there's a philosophical conversation to also be had about fees. There are districts that don't charge fees, there are districts that definitely don't charge fees for some of the things we do, like clubs, sports, things like that. So that's, that tends to be more of a philosophical conversation, when you look at, when you look at what we can afford, and looking at that through revenue and through finance, which of course I'm always looking at, I would say that the amount we receive in fees is not a huge number. It helps, it definitely helps, but it's not, it's not something that's helping enough that it makes that much of a difference. So, and I do think that when I look at fees compared to surrounding districts, we do a little chart, and we have all the fees, I think we're in the, in the middle of where we should be.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah.
How do we compare?
Yeah, I think, you know, the only thing that is hard to compare is Kids Corner, because most districts don't offer something like it in district. And so that's something that's hard to compare. Besides that, the rest of our fees are pretty comparable. Transportation, there are districts that don't charge, and so that's also one that's not too many districts that we can compare to. But other than that, we're pretty much in there. It's those curriculum fees that we can really compare.
Yeah, and again, I love the fact that we're able to do that and keep them flat, and that's a great thing.
Yeah.
You know, I think as long as we can keep doing that, and it doesn't hurt us anywhere else, I think it's an awesome thing.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. And especially this year, I thought it's a good year not to raise fees.
Anyone else? Okay, excellent. That brings us to?
Building brighter futures?
Yes, our Building Brighter Futures update.
All right, so we are so excited for all of the work that has been happening since the successful approval of the referendum in November, which feels like a long time ago. Huge credit to Jason for hitting the ground running and really spearheading the work that we're going to talk about tonight. So we'll go to the next slide and give an overview. Jason, jump in definitely where you want to. We're going to talk about just the different channels that administration has pursued to really elicit feedback and input from a variety of different stakeholder groups. So you can see here, this is one of those student focus groups at Lincoln, and there were quite a few that happened during the lunch hours with the principal advisory groups. And I think there's some more pictures that are reflected in this as well. So the next slides will show some action shots. So you can see here, these are some students who are eating and advising our architects on what they'd like to see. So we were really pleased with our, the STR Architects team, Sandra and Mike, and, you know, really, there's been a nice reception in the way that they have worked with all of our stakeholder groups, and it's been nice to have them, and yeah, I don't want to add anything to it.
I don't want to cut you off. Yeah, no, I would just say that this was, this was a really neat experience. We had the entire Lincoln Middle School fill out surveys of students, so we had over 600, and I think 60 surveys that were filled out, and then when this group was able to come together, Mike actually did a really good job, one of the architects, of being able to look at the information, we compiled it and worked on it, to be able to go back to them and say, hey, we see that students are saying this, tell us more about what this means, or what does that look like, or help us understand it more. So they did it at each grade level, it was really neat. I will say that each grade level, I think we have, yeah, there's another picture, I would say that at each grade level, the first thing that the students said, when they said, and they said, think big, tell us more, tell us what you want, tell us what you don't want, anything, the first thing every grade all of a sudden was, bigger hallways. That was the first thing. And it was funny, because then we met with one of our focus groups for teachers right after that, and the first thing they said was, bigger hallways. So it's a consistent need, and it was pretty funny. So yeah, they did a great job, here's just an example, sixth grade, and we do old school, you know, put it on the board, but then take a picture, write up the notes, and it's been great, the notes are being shared with the staff, and we're able to look at them, and then they'll be compiling all that information and putting it to use to say, okay, this is what people are saying, now let's work on what it's going to look like. Here is one of our staff focus groups, so we did split them up by like, like jobs, so whether it's, this was our core, so this was all the like math in LA and social studies teachers, we had science separate, because the room just looks so different, but this is just one of those examples, and you can see behind the architects in the back there, that's the brainstorming that's happening. And again, really interesting, some things we've thought about, some things we haven't. And we've done it with so many different groups, too. We've met with custodians, we've met with instructional assistants, we met with our food services, not our employees, it's a vendor, but we said, tell us what we need, it's a pretty small kitchen down there, so what does that look like? So they were able to give that. STR will also be bringing in a specialist for food services, so we'll be looking at that. We've surveyed, and so a total of over 800 responses, we've surveyed in a lot of different ways, we've surveyed the students and the staff, we've surveyed our families, we've surveyed community members, really getting a lot of great input. And like I said, there's some things where it's like, oh yeah, we've definitely thought about that, but there's a lot where it's like, nope, you know, wasn't on my radar, or we haven't thought about that. And it's everything from how the school should be laid out to where outlets should be, or, you know, so it gets as little as that and as big and grandiose as just where everything should be, so it's pretty neat. We've reached out to the neighbors at Lincoln, so we actually sent in the mail with QR codes to all of the neighbors around Lincoln, really wanting their feedback. Specifically, that was more, it wasn't, you know, what do learning spaces look like? That was more about like, tell us about either your fears or what you want to see with construction, tell us about, you know, any ideas or thoughts you have or anything you're worried about. It also asked them, what's the best way to communicate? Do you want to keep in communication, and if so, do you want to text, do you want an email? How would you like to get that information so that it's, so that you're being updated? And, you know, and we're hearing great things, and I guess, you know, there's always concern about what's that construction going to look like, and, you know, we'll work closely with And, you know, we'll work closely with our architects, but really with Nicholas about, you know, when are we starting construction? How early in the morning can it start? And when will we start? And what does it look like for staging areas? And construction traffic and everything. So we'll be working through that. We're not there yet, but we'll, you know, it's definitely input we're taking. And then we'll, we'll share with Nicholas and work with them on a, a plan. We, and I want to thank Heather Soleranos in the back. Thank you so much. She's put together, so this was taking our referendum, which is gonna make me dizzy if it keeps going. But this is, it, we have now updated our page to be the Building Brighter Futures page. This is the homepage for that. But then there is a dashboard for both Lincoln and for Westbrook. And as we continue to work, we'll continue to be updating with timelines and with updates. We also will be adding a finance page onto here, so people can be seeing finance. When do we sell the bonds? How much have we received? How much have we spent? What's the budget look like? Everything. So we'll be updating that. It'll be part of the board packet moving forward as well. But then we'll take that chart and put it right in here on the website. We've been meeting, so the meetings continue. There's lots of meetings. I'm ready to move my official office over to Lincoln right now. But it's been great. This is a, you know, we've been meeting with the village. So recently, we met back at the end of November with the village and the architects and Nicholas and us all to sit down and talk about just the plans. When do they need concept drawings? When do we need to go to the zoning board? Let's make sure we have that timeline down. We obviously have an end date in mind, so let's back it up and figure out exactly when we need to go. So we have a timeline. Our architects, after that meeting now, have developed a timeline. Nicholas says, yep, that looks good. So we know what we're working towards. Because we had a timeline for how to develop and get, go out to bid, but we need to obviously work with the village moving forward. We also are working, that picture in the bottom right there is our maintenance crew meeting with 2010 engineering, as well as the architecture firm. That, there, we're talking about some sustainable design or green energy options. We've been talking about geothermals, but we'll be, we have some other conversations to be talking about as well. And, and then pricing it all out and seeing what it looks like and what it can save us and how much it costs at the, at the beginning and so on. So that's been a good meeting. We today, hot off the presses from this picture, we met for the first time our Lincoln Steering Committee. So this is a group that helped to be a liaison really between the architect and the staff. We have a parent on the committee as well. But this is a group that will be meeting pretty regularly, starting after all our focus groups. So the last one's January 16th. And they'll be really helping to give guidance to the, to the architects. So the architects are hearing everything. Some of the things they hear go against some other things. At some point, we're gonna need to prioritize. Cost, of course, at some point will be a factor. And so they, today, the meeting was just an initial meeting to start getting them to understand what the process will be and where we need to be. And so they have some deadlines and timelines. They are gonna go on visits to some schools, January 8th. So they're excited about that. We talked about that today as well, to just see some other schools. Our Learning Spaces Committee, so this is part of our strategic plan. And it's separate, but definitely relates to what we're talking about with Building Brighter Futures. This is a committee made up of parents and staff members who are coming together to look at what our learning spaces look like. And that's everything, you know, there's a lot of conversation, of course, around furniture. What does a desk look like, or a table, or, you know, what do you need? What are chairs, all that? But there's also conversations around colors of walls and lights dimming and different things like that as well. We're not looking to like knock down walls, except for obviously the construction pieces. But we are looking at what can the learning spaces turn into and what can they look like? And so this is a group that met for a full day last week now, last week. They're gonna be meeting again in January. We also just sent out surveys to, there are students that are getting some surveys and then staff as well. This is a district-wide initiative. It's definitely gonna help guide as we talk about Lincoln's classrooms or as we look at the Westbrook edition. So it's, it's a, it's a committee that will help guide those, but it's a district-wide. We're also looking at Lions Park, Fairview, existing Westbrook, of what can those spaces look like as well. So it's exciting work. It's big work. It's, it's a lot. But they did a great job last week, I think, you know, looking at just like, what could it be? They got to draw their ideal classroom and share that. Look at some different ideas of other classrooms and start to just brainstorm what it could be. Next up, so we're continuing to refine our Lincoln designs. We definitely have some timelines. By February 16th, I think, the design of what the building will look like, where everything falls, not everything specific, but enough because then we'll be bringing that to the village as a concept design. So that'll be happening around February, so be excited for that. We're gonna be looking at launching Westbrook Input Process. So that starts, we're gonna kick it off at the Westbrook Staff Meeting in January. And then right after that, we'll be doing focus groups again with Westbrook, just like we did at Lincoln. We'll be, we're, we're talking about how to get that student input, probably not through a survey, but more through a discussion in a classroom. And then we'll be talking with Westbrook, we'll also be surveying, just like we did at Lincoln. We also are looking at then Community Open House, something where the community can come back once we're far enough along with Lincoln to say, here's what we're thinking. Talk to us. We definitely want neighbors there, but we want the whole community to be able to see this is what we're looking at. Give us some feedback and, and tell us what you think. And there might be some choices at that point or not. We're just, we're not close enough yet to know, but there will be something coming in the spring. I think that was the last slide. That was a lot, so. Quite, so really, it's exciting. I think everybody's doing a great job of just offering up things and, and kind of thinking big. We keep saying, think big. You know, at some point, we'll have to minimize, but at this point, we're just about dreaming and thinking big.
Okay, thank you for sharing that. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, very excited to get started. Go ahead.
Let us know when there's any more tours of other schools. Dale said, come by his. So if you want to set that one up, I'd like to see the school. Is this Maple?
Yeah.
Oh, we saw Maple then.
But I think it'd be nice to see, even though it's a smaller school, I think there are a lot of great things. We're actually looking to also go to the Lincoln School in Skokie that some of us went to at ISB Dinner. That's worth going to. And I, I would encourage, like, if board members want to come to, it's a nice, it's a nice place to see. Yeah. So. Great job. And some in Beverly Hills, we think. Actually, Mark used AI and fed all of the, I thought you were gonna include this in the slides, but we'll send this to you later. He took all of the input, I think, was it just from students or from all of the stakeholder groups? And he had it create an image of what was designed. And it looked like a Beverly Hills, 90210 of like the future. It was the most beautiful, stunning campus you've ever seen in your life, and we'll have to send it. We'd all want to go back to school and be there, but.
There was like a large outdoor, you would all call it quad, right? Like?
And then Jason quickly sent us a picture of our little red schoolhouse and said, but this is the budget. So don't even look at that. He slapped our hands away.
Dream big, but not that big.
Dream big, but be realistic. So.
Chris, did you want to say something?
I don't have a question, just a comment. I, I just really want to commend you, Mary, Jason, and Heather, and everyone who's involved in this and just being as, as willing to get feedback from as many stakeholders as possible. I know it's a ton of work. And, but I think this is absolutely the right way to do it. And I just think, and you know, Heather, with the, the website that you have is, is really great. It's easy to navigate and the information's there. So I, I'm just, I couldn't be happier about how, you know, all of you and your team are going about this process. It's really been, really been exemplary. So.
Thank you, Chris.
Proud to see it.
Thank you. We joked, we never want to use all the lessons we learned from the referendum ever again. But in fact, a lot of the lessons we learned during the referendum are in fact really useful because, you know, taking that informational campaign mentality really helped. And Heather pivoting and using that tool and all of the different ways that she leveraged social media and just the storytelling of the need and really using all of those skillsets to make sure that we're continuing to maintain the collaboration of the community. And yeah, so all, all of the elements, I think, and especially just really being mindful of the neighbors and trying to really make sure they have access to updates. And a lot of the investments that we made throughout that campaign, the informational campaign, are gonna allow us to be more effective in using different communication tools, such as text messages and emails. And all of these different platforms are actually worthy investments that now we can use for this, this work. So thank goodness. We hope to never have to use this for another referendum.
There is not a single stakeholder, staff member, student, parent, community member who can say that they weren't part of this process.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's really, that's really awesome.
It's awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any comments? Okay, moving forward then to our fiscal year 25 extended school year, et cetera.
Yes, nothing like talking about the summer in December. But unfortunately, Dr. Vanda Har and Sarah DeBersky couldn't be here tonight due to either their own illness or their children's illness, so due to the winter weather. But they put a lot of work into the collaboration around this board memo to inform the board of planning that is underway for ESY, which is Extended School Year, Multilingual Learner Summer Programming, which is ML Summer Programming, our Summer Bridge Program, which had previously been funded by ESSER grants from the federal government and no longer will have that funding available, as well as Summer Band and Orchestra. So the real meat of this memo talks about some of the, the contemplation of how we would continue to offer Summer Bridge using local funding. And as, as been, as has been shared to the board in previous meetings on this topic, we wanted to make sure that we had some level of program evaluation to evaluate the effectiveness of this program. We think ad nauseam it's a good thing because we've heard such from families and staff and students. And I think intuitively, it's always better for kids to be in school and having routines and continuation of learning. It can't hurt. But we wanted to see if the data and the progress of students who had attended, how it compared to students who had been invited to attend and didn't attend, as well as peers who didn't qualify and didn't attend. And how, how did the, the data compare for kids when you looked at their end of your spring MAP scores and their transition to their fall MAP scores? And as is often the case with data, it wasn't overwhelmingly clear that participating in this program had such a direct correlation to their performance or their outperformance of peers who did not attend. We saw that particularly in the area of reading. It didn't look to be as positive in its, in its ability to demonstrate an impact on their MAP scores. Now, keeping in mind, this is not a high-level academic research study. We would say if this was a truly, you know, more thorough research design, you would want to look at other indicators. You would want to do a more comprehensive case study in this. I think this was just a snapshot into what might be a measure that indicated that we would, might want to see there to be evidence of improvement compared to kids who didn't attend. You could certainly make some, some cases here that there'd be other factors that might also be important to evaluate. And really, that gets to the point of, we do recommend continuing this program and using local funds to do so. And that is approximately $17,000. That $17,000 is a reduction of costs of about, I believe, $10,000 was off of the original. And that was reflective of slightly larger class sizes, slightly a more contained invitation to being more tier three students in reading and having, you know, optimization of what is the instruction. So that we're gonna try to refine and really try to have better alignment in terms of the what kids are receiving in this programming, as well as continue to collect data to be able to have more indication over multiple years to say, okay, now we're actually able to have more conclusive trends around how kids are performing versus their peers who didn't attend. We think there's enough value to it, especially in math, that we don't want to completely take away the program, but we want to watch it carefully if we're gonna be able to sustain this type of programming and using local funds. We also would like to recommend the possibility of piloting a small number of tuition-based enrichment classes. This is something the district used to offer, I think, over 15 years ago, maybe even more. And this would be tuition-based enrichment, summer school programming. And many districts around us do this. It does present some challenges in terms of the administration, the cost of this. You know, there are some limitations in making sure you're able to staff this type of programming. There's a concern that possibly people might want to teach these classes versus the ones that we are obligated to provide, such as the ESY classes or the multilingual summer school classes. So we have some reservations about what may be some unintended consequences of offering this. But we also think there's some potential that, we do think families are always looking for great programming. We do think there might be an ability to offset some of the costs if we have a tuition-based, a successful tuition-based program. Might that help, you know, set off some of the local funding for Summer Bridge programming? So we, we want to take kind of a conservative risk here and, and start small and really see, can we staff something? Can we build up some success around this? Can we simultaneously continue to measure and tighten the experience of the Summer Bridge students who are invited to attend? And then monitor this and come forth with more recommendations for the following summer. That's a brief summary, but if there's any other specifics I can answer, I'm happy to.
Does anyone have anything they want to ask?
Thank you, Mary. I just had a quick question. The possibility of offering the tuition-based enrichment classes, I think that sounds great to me. And I was just curious, if you did, do you have some thoughts about the content area? Like, what are some?
So we, we have some preliminary thoughts. I think we're open to what is most realistic in terms of staffing. I think some of it would be driven by the input for teachers who might be interested. And that is to say, would I be more willing to provide an enrichment course and teach one if I had more oversight over the offering? Or would I prefer, you know, the district provide for me, you know, like a STEM curriculum, all the materials and kind of pre-plan it out and provide me with that? And I'm, am I more willing to teach under that situation? So I think we're trying to be flexible in response to what would be more willing to be staffed. And that would really drive, I think, the direction we'd make. I think we'd be open to either, and possibly a combination. Maybe, you know, one teacher A would love to do it, but provide for me the resources and the experiences, and I'll provide the instruction. Teacher B might be like, let me teach this because I love cooking and I want to teach cooking and I want to create the content. And we don't want to get in the way of that passion because sometimes those are the most exciting classes the kids take in the summer. So kind of whatever would staff, probably be pretty flexible.
Karen?
I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate all the work that went into and continuing to make sure that the Summer Bridge is something that is viable and productive. Since it was something that that was a concern from the time that we started it is whether this was gonna be something that was sustainable. So that sustainability is, is greatly appreciated.
Pam?
I just wanted to say, it's exciting to see the possibility of the enrichment classes coming back. My son was part of it. And I think Mrs. Logar might have been one of the teachers. And I remember him coming home and talking about mom prospect. One of the things that they did was go to the museum. And I can hook you up with Emily at the museum.
I might be calling you. Thank you.
I had a question with regard to, I guess, do you see any interplay between the Summer Bridge programming and this? You know, we're calling it enrichment, but my understanding is we're not necessarily, like earmarking it as like accelerated level. We mean enrichment is like a broader.
Yeah, good, good question. Or yes, and, and I should clarify. And when we say enrichment, we mean kind of non-academic remediation-based, more sort of, I hate to use the word fun, because I would say that those Summer Bridge classes are fun. But even that topic around fun and kind of choice and sort of exploratory learning, how can we weave in some of those experiences to the Summer Bridge experience? So kids are also equally engaged and excited while also, you know, remediating my, you know, some of the areas of challenge.
Yeah, and I guess, I mean, not being super familiar with the structure of the Summer Bridge, but only having my own summer school experiences to reflect on. I recall circumstances where, you know, you could do kind of a math review type class in the morning and then do like an art class or something in the afternoon. Are we expecting that like those programs would work together that way?
I think possibly. I think we're in the early stages of like, I think the next steps, if the board, you know, indicates an interest in, in administration pursuing this, I think the next steps- know, indicates an interest in administration pursuing this, I think the next steps would be really trying to make sure we have the actual interest from staff to be able to staff E S Y multilingual bridge and then kind of explore what might be an enrichment offering. But then beyond that, I think it really will depend on, you know, all of those variables. And then, of course, would parents actually sign up for these experiences? And that would also drive, you know, if the classes run. I think intuitively, we think there'd be an interest just for, just the amount of need we have in the community for kids to do fun, exciting things during the summer days, you know, in July. But yeah, possibly, there could be a combination of experiences for kids. So, like doing some kind of academic-based classes and then some more exploratory classes.
Okay. I was just curious about that. Anybody else have any comments? Okay. That brings us then to superintendent goals update.
Okay. In your packet, you've received my updated goals. I hope in year two of doing this that it remains easier or more organized than year one, which became a problem. It's still a little challenging in that it's, the template for me to input updates is a little, I'm still learning how to do it in a way that works. So, hopefully, this is updated. But you can see the December updates should be found under the October ones, which was my, when I last updated. So, I welcome any questions or any areas I can provide elaboration. I do want to just point out that certainly these are my goals that the board evaluates my effectiveness through, but they really reflect the outstanding and hard work of the team that I get to work with. So, I always feel a little weird, you know, presenting these as if I'm doing all of these things alone by myself, but it couldn't be more opposite, which I know is evident to the board. But just truly, this is a significant body of work done by my team and the people in the district who I work alongside. So, if you have hard questions, you can ask them. I'm just kidding. I will answer all the hard ones. I thank them.
Jen, go ahead.
All right. I'm going to jump around a little bit. So, for goal area one, it talks about the new E L A curriculum. What has the feedback been so far from teachers and from students?
So, I will defer to Kristen, who's not here, but I can definitely provide more updates on this to the board. But I know that the feedback that I've heard from teachers is, it's challenging, which is to be expected in the first year of, you know, implementation. I think there's a lot, there's a lot of like the technical learning curve of just like the online resources, the pacing, the assessment piece, and there, you know, inevitably, there are a lot of changes when you've used a curriculum for as long as we did and now all of a sudden you're in your new one. Even those who piloted, you know, are expressing that there's, it's quite a lift to learn it. But I think I've also heard from teachers who have shared that they really like the curriculum and that they're really excited about the engagement from their students. So, it's probably a bit of a mixed bag. If I had to guess, it might be more pensiveness from staff, just because, as you know, we have teachers that really are perfectionists and they expect so much of themselves and they expect to be perfect in their first year of implementing something and don't take well to the reassurance that give yourself permission to learn this and grow into it. So, I do think a lot of it comes from their own high expectations of themselves. I do know that there's been the structures put in place with the content area specialists and, you know, the work of Kristen and Aaron to try to have some regular collaboration and support meetings, and that will continue. I do think they would be better speaking to the question about student feedback and I, you know, I don't have that information on hand to be able to speak.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I can follow up with it.
Yeah, I think I was just curious if you'd, what they had heard and so.
Yeah. I know staff have, yeah.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I mean, I think that all seems right. I just, I'm hopeful that, you know, they're excited about it even in their apprehensiveness or pensiveness about it. In goal area four, you talked about the fact that Dr. Allen is working with Lincoln and on the Delt initiatives. I was just curious, will this work also happen in the elementary schools or is it just for Lincoln?
Well, we really welcome the partnership of Dr. Allen and his work with our leadership team last year has remained, I think, really illuminating for us in our continued work. But the focus is really more on Lincoln at this time because of the priority area of the Delt and just the needs articulated in our equity audit and as well as, you know, our surveys. We just, this is a higher priority based on some of those data points. So, you know, his influence, I think, remains felt across the leadership of all of the schools. His on-the-ground coaching and consultation is going to be more focused to Lincoln.
Okay. I was excited to see District 214 throughout a lot of this, so that was exciting. In goal area five, it talked about the 214 Educator Pathways Program and how many students are coming from, like, the high school here to like do their observations and that kind of thing. How many D 214 students had then, and you don't have to answer like, but are there then people who then come work here from that partnership?
So, I would have to get back to the board about the specific number of, like, staff who we've hired that have been part of that program. I don't know, and I don't want to misspeak, but I don't know that they've had, like, they've graduated yet that we've hosted, that they've yet graduated with their teaching degree. But I think some are getting really close. And I know the ones that I know that are participating, that have been former students, I have like a personal tracking device on them. So, I know when they're graduating because I'm like, so signed here, you know? So, I think we're trying to really like make sure that this remains the place they want to come back to the minute they graduate of college. So, I think we're trying to be even more collaborative and, but I don't, I don't think, I wouldn't want to misspeak on our data and maybe it's more than I'm aware, but I don't have immediate knowledge of anyone that we have, you know, worked with in their partnership experience and then they've officially been hired yet.
Yet. Yeah. And I'm sorry to announce that before.
No, it's okay. I think I can, I'd want to confirm because maybe I'm wrong. Yeah.
Yeah. No, and that's exciting. I mean, it's exciting that they're coming here and doing their observation work and I'm just curious. On January sixth, it talked about the fact that there's cultural responsive spaces P D happening, or professional learning happening. Is everyone required to do that cultural responsive? Because I know the sixth is that big day that everybody is.
Yes, I think that a large majority of staff will be able to receive the training on that day, but there will be some based on where they are receiving their professional development elsewhere. We will have alternative plans for them to receive that training at an alternative time. But, you know, there are, as you mentioned, you know, in light of the cross, you know, district collaborations, there are some specialty areas that are receiving like content-specific instruction in a different off-site location the whole day. So, we'll make sure that everyone receives it.
And then, my last question is, I was again excited to see that collaboration between fifty-seven and two-fourteen. For the math partnership, and I know Kristen's not here, so if the question needs to be answered later, that's fine. But what are the major outcomes we are hoping for in that partnership? And I'm really excited about freshman data coming in.
Oh, I know.
February. But.
It may even be the end of January, but.
Exciting.
We put February.
What are the outcomes for that math partnership, though? Are they to align horizontally? Is that the goal? Is it to?
I think it really is a title, a tighter vertical, you know, so that we have even down to, I think, a more cohesive program offering that actually gets to, gets to a destination that is desirable. Because, you know, right now, we have a little bit, if you picture like a train station, you know, our trains come in, but we don't always like connect to the right outcome for kids for when they graduate high school. So, trying to be more clear with the ultimate goals and experiences of kids, not just within their elementary school experience, but their elementary through end of high school experience and then beyond. So, I know Kristen could probably better speak to the specific outcomes, but I know that, you know, our department, math department chair, Laura Gigliano, has been wonderful and she really has been really intensely collaborating with the two-fourteen counterparts, especially at Prospect. So, it's really nice, this program. It's not like a sort of surface-level collaboration. It really has allowed for all of our math teachers to be working alongside all of two-fourteen's math teachers and the leadership of all departments of the middle schools and the high school math departments to be having regular embedded, regular, you know, regular articulation about the ongoing work. And I was able, Kristen has attended these trainings, I was able to attend one. I left feeling so just impressed with the caliber of our math teachers, not just at our buildings, but also across District 214. I was so comforted knowing that these are the amazing people that are working with not just our fifty-seven kids, but our two-fourteen, you know, kids. It was such an outstanding group of people. And that was just one swath of representation of these teachers. So, I think there was an energy in the room that really was a credit to not only who was attending, but also the facilitators. It was a very purposeful and high-level engaging group that they've brought in and it was really exciting. So, I think, I think there's a lot of specific outcomes that will come from it, but also being mindful of the high school just as much wanting to listen to the middle school teachers as much as middle school wanting to listen to the high school. So, there's, I think, this foundation of mutual respect about both directions of the kids we're working with.
And I'll say, because I was at the last District 214 Strategic Planning Meeting last week, last week. And they too mentioned this partnership in particular, and so I think there's a lot of excitement around it.
Yeah.
I realized I did have one more question.
Sure.
My last question, I promise, is I saw that there's a collaborative hopefully formed across a lot of the different Village of Mont Prospect areas. There was, it was in goal area ten, I think. Are we leading this initiative? Is it, what's?
Yeah, so Heather, this is a shout-out to Heather. So, this was really Heather's baby. She really has been so wonderful about, you know, trying to unite and collaborate with people in job-alike positions. And she's already done this with local neighboring school districts and really brought together such a powerful group of colleagues who may have worked together in job-alike positions for years, but until Heather came along, never regularly collaborated. And she has been the person that started that. And she has not done yet. Now, she wants to take on the village key communicators and collaborate. So, she's really taken this concept and I think it totally aligns with, you know, our strategic plans work and really aligns to her own passions around connecting with people in this work. So, you know, I think a lot of it is still kind of coming together, but really, the vision is saying, we want to make sure that we're having these communication, key communicators from each of these organizations within our, within our area together and knowing, having relationships with each other so that we're texting each other, we're tightening the communication gap from, through the relationships with.
That's great. No, that's super exciting. Well done, Heather.
Great job.
Yeah, no, I think that's great because I think one thing that we talked a lot about at that strategic planning was just about how do we, you know, if we all have these portraits of our graduates or we all have these things, like what are ways that like other community people can help with getting some of that messaging out or thinking about what that means for our community at large, right? And so, Heather, I'm super excited about this potential collaboration. So, well done. Thank you. I am really done now. I promise.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Pam?
The job-alike or collaborating, please think of the Historical Society. They have been, we've been talking about working, networking with the schools more. So, that would be so cool.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Chris?
Well, first of all, Dr. Gar, thank you for your thoroughness in these updates. This is really, really great and very easy to follow and it's nice to see the history. So, you've nailed it. This is your, is this only year two of Super Eval or three?
Two.
I mean, it's like we're veterans at this.
Psych, psych.
Right, so, I, right. So, two questions. Can you speak, I noticed in the, I think it's goal two, I should have written this down. It's the assessment goal, right? And that we have a grading, homework, and progress report committee.
Oh, yes. Goal two?
Goal two, thank you. Can you maybe speak to what they are up to, what their charter is, you know, anything that came out of that?
Yeah. This is, this is a group that is bravely venturing into the unknown. I mean, this is, this is a major area within the strategic plan and truthfully, I mean, the work is going to have to be defined through the collaborative kind of stakeholder groups that is looking at these really challenging, big topics of grading, homework, progress report. And I think the, the thinking about the work of achieving this goal by the end of the strategic plan or getting to a better place is really trying to say, we didn't want to bite off like too narrow of an assignment. And instead of just taking on like grading, I think we wanted to include homework because that's a huge impact, especially in the experience of kids and families. So, we included homework. And then we talked about like, really, we need to look at how progress is reported and how are we actually communicating growth of kids? So, this quickly became a massive lift in terms of what is the work of this group. And it's so far been an initial kind of collaborative of stakeholders across the district and trying to look into what is going to be the data that this group is going to look at to collect to inform the work. I think it's probably likely there's going to be some mini subgroups that are going to look into outlining the work, but Kristen will be able to provide, I think, a more articulated update of what are the timelines of this group and the work they're going to do within the strategic plan. Because I think internally, we recognize this is a major, this is a major assignment and it's going to have a lot of potential impact in the way staff are, you know, engaging in this work about how families want to see things, how students understand it. The initial work, given that we are in the middle of a new curriculum, is trying to look at the reading as the curriculum that we're contemplating these topics and trying to do some sort of alignment around that and versus taking on it just abstractly. But I, if the board's open to it, I think Kristen can come and talk more about kind of a general status update of this goal and provide sort of next steps.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Sure.
I think it would be good just to maybe recap, what's the problem we're trying to solve? What's the end goal? I know we talked about this a lot. There's really a lot of good activity going on, but I think it would be maybe good to get a little.
Sure.
Maybe say this is a.
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. And then my only other question, goal five, which is. Sorry, you know, I sometimes think I talk loud enough, though. I don't even. But no, sorry about that. The goal five, the attract, develop, retain, high-quality, diverse, innovative staff, there's clearly lots of great activity going on, on the hiring and the recruiting. I'd like to, I'm sure there's activities going on on the retention and staff wellness side. Can you maybe just speak to, and there's nothing in the bolded list, I'm certain there are things that we're doing and it would just be good to hear that. I mean, that is, is, we all agree, it's every bit is important. We want, certainly want to recruit, but we definitely want to retain our great staff.
Absolutely. Jason's going to talk a little bit about what's coming ahead for wellness.
Absolutely. So, yeah, so I would say that the schools do a lot with wellness and so, but we at the district level, so we started the year with a trivia opportunity for staff over at Red Barn after school. One day, they came over, it was great. We had soda and pizza and maybe like thirty or forty staff members. Man, it might have been more and it was a competitive night and it was fun. And so, we do, we do that and it's combined with like, all the schools are doing holiday parties, I believe, this year. I know we were, I was at Westbrook the other day and, and so, I know that, you know, we kind of do some district things to get that wellness going as well. And so, we'll be coming up with things after the new year with, we try to do a mixture of in-person and so, we'll do things like go bowling or we'll do things like the trivia night or we'll do that, we've done pickleball tournaments and volleyball tournaments. And then we'll do lots of things where it's, you don't have to go somewhere, but we want staff to connect. And so, we do things like, we've done bingo games before, we've done a padlet, which is just like an online platform where people will put out questions, lots of times fun questions, sometimes, I mean, sometimes educational-related, how do you, you know, what's the best way for you to get students' attention to start class? But it also can be, what's your favorite recipe for the holiday that's coming up or whatever? So, we do a lot of that, just trying to get staff to really know each other and really to, you know, if you, if you enjoy the people you're working with, you're going to like your job more and you're going to work better probably together. So, that's some of the wellness that's coming up.
Yeah, and you know what I'm realizing what's not in here and I'm so sorry is, and we've mentioned this in previous updates. and we've mentioned this in previous updates, we have the results of our student or our staff feedback that we did, our survey. So we have a meeting in January to meet with our union leadership, just, you know, disseminate and determine a plan for dissemination of the feedback. So in addition to all the work that Jason talked about, I think the real important work that we're on the brink of doing is like a more comprehensive employee satisfaction and need survey so that we can start to determine what's going well and what are areas that we need to improve upon in the effort to retain and support staff. So that's, that's coming, and I, that's a mistake that that's not included, but that's a huge component of staff growth and support.
That's great, great to hear. I know NSSEO has been doing something like that for several years.
Yeah.
It's been very, right?
Yeah.
Get that view, so looking forward.
Thank you, yeah. Thanks for asking, because that was an oversight.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Vicky? I just had a comment and a question, so my comment is kind of piggybacking on Jen's excitement to see the collaborations between two fourteen and fifty-seven. And so Jen, you know, as part of the strategic planning, mentioned that it was spoken about there. And I would say even at the past few D two fourteen board meetings, and this last one too, like the board is excited, like Dr. Gore is excited, and they literally say, I'm excited, I'm so happy, and, and they've, you know, as a community member watching, it sounds like they allude to, you know, math is just the start. I mean, who knows where it could lead? So it's just awesome to think, you know, four years ago, when having this type of collaboration seemed like a dream, and now we're taking these concrete steps. So it's super exciting. And then my question is, it's Goal four, fiscal stewardship and facility planning. We talked a lot about CFAC, and I don't know, Dr. Gore, Dr. Case, if you could, you know, just thinking about CFAC, I know at one point we're like, hey, let's think about the referendum and full-day kindergarten. And when you project a little bit, you know, where do you see CFAC going? Or are there other big issues that you think, yeah, CFAC's gonna?
Yeah. No, absolutely. So I think, you know, when it started, the first year was about learning about school finance and do the financial projections. And then the second year was about learning about bonds and do the financial projections, financial projections every year, but, and then, and then it was about trying to build up capacity to get to referendum and all that. That happened a little quicker than we were anticipating, but CFAC jumped right in and helped and supported. And so I think we've had conversations at CFAC that, you know, will sometimes go off on a bit of a tangent, but then it's a great idea of like, oh, how can CFAC support either looking at revenue opportunity or looking at expenditures and how we do it, or even looking at how we invest money and things like that and getting PMA to continue to have those conversations. Different, Bob's the bonds guy, not the investment person, but, so somebody else from PMA, but having those types of conversations. So I would, I would say that CFAC is, my trajectory of what I thought CFAC was going to do has gone a lot quicker than I anticipated, and so, which is great, but now it's like, okay, so then what's next? And so the referendum was obviously a big conversation, and so I do see then moving forward, revenue is probably the next thing we'll probably look at and tackle and have conversations about. That, yeah, okay.
Anybody else?
Could I ask one question related to Chris's? You've already exhausted, no. I, I know that there was talk about doing stay interviews that were happening. Are those going to continue to happen?
Yes, those will continue, yes. They happened in the spring, and then I know Karen plans to continue, because we, we really gleaned some interesting information.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Corinne, did you have something you wanted to share? Okay, just want to make sure I'm turning to the side of it. Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will move on to our student board member update.
Oh, great. So this is so exciting. This is, we're getting to the fun part and actually kind of the sad part, because the caliber of applicants we received was so great that it's going to be a challenge to even narrow it down to two. So I would love to ask for a brave one or two board members who would join me in the work of narrowing down to a recommendation of one seventh grader and one eighth grader who have applied. We had about twenty-four, one just had to revoke their application because they're in other activities, which I respect. These are go-getters, these are kids that have lots of options. But I think the next step would be to meet and schedule some in-person interviews. I think that although I would love to meet with each of them with this committee, I think timing-wise, we want to be able to capture meaningful work, particularly for the eighth grader who will only serve for the remainder of this year. I think we should pick a handful that rise to the top, and first of all, first, first determine what will that be, that criteria that we will use, and then invite them in for some interviews and make a recommendation. We would love to have their attending of the February board meeting to be announced, meet with the board, and then serve for the rest of the year. So maybe let Kim and me know, would that work? And then based on the availability and interest of the board, we can determine what would be timed. I think we would want to do these interviews during the day, because it's just nice, because you know the kids are available. We can more easily coordinate that versus the variability of their after-school time, so that might be disappointing to, that's a recommendation. We can certainly make anything works.
Okay, so if anyone's interested in participating in that effort, and I guess just to be clear, are you looking for one or two board members to help with the criteria?
The criteria and then the interviewing of the next step.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do it all.
All of, that whole piece, okay. So whoever is interested, reach out, you can email myself and Dr. Gore, and depending on the level of interest, we'll pick from a hat or.
Perfect.
You know, throw a horseshoe, or I don't know, whatever you do. I did want to ask, the selection is certainly one thing. At what point, or have you already communicated to those who have applied, kind of what the expectations are?
Yes.
As far as I know, I think one of, kind of the lingering.
Yes, so we did, we did provide in the application materials and as well as during like the recruitment kind of phase, really trying to provide them with the actual dates and provide them with the expectations. And certainly, I think we would want to weave that into the next round as well, just so that we're continuously making sure that this would be a good fit for them and their availability, but.
And I guess too, we as a board have to decide what we want that to look like, because I think one of the things that we had talked about but hadn't fully nailed down was the expectation of how long the student should be here.
Yes, so I think what we would start with, based on the recommendation of colleagues who have done this, is that they would come, they would provide kind of an update, potentially participate in any other kind of input the board would like them to participate in, that that after they gave sort of their status update and reporting, that they would be welcome to stay, but that they could be free to go. Because obviously honoring that they are kids and wanting to be students first over student board members. So respecting, you know, that these are in the evening and that we want to be sensitive to their sleep and everything, so we would probably give them sort of the first reporting shortly after maybe the spotlight.
Okay.
And then certainly things could be arranged based on.
Yeah.
The topics, but.
I guess just brainstorming, I don't know how appropriate it would be to have the student board member involved in maybe the agenda planning process?
Sure.
Just to see, you know, are we planning to talk about anything substantive that makes sense for that student to give feedback or participate in?
Sure.
And then we could structure the agenda to accommodate that, right?
Sure.
So those things come early, that way.
Sure.
I can't think of what they, I mean, other than the tax levy, right? I can't think of what those things might be.
And I think too, my colleagues who have worked with this and have been kind of leaders in this, have recommended that they, because of some of the limitations of them being students and these being in the evening, really continuing to use them as a sounding board for topics, even if they're not attending and providing it live, but like knowing the topics that are going to be talked about, do they have any particular comments they'd like represented at the meeting on their behalf about this, so. But yeah, I think it really can take organic direction based on the needs and interests of the board as well as the direction of the students, so.
Okay, sounds great. So other than, make sure you reach out to Dr. Gore and myself about if you're wanting to participate in setting the criteria, but then also in the interview process. Are there any questions, comments, thoughts?
So I just, after hearing you speak, Kimberly, I just had a thought. So I do know that we changed the order of the agenda, where the board member reports go last when we talk about the PTOs and the Ed Foundation, and just, not that we certainly have to do this, but for the student board members, maybe we could move it to the front, that might be something of interest, and I could even see them, like, if they want, giving the Lincoln Report, like if they came to the Lincoln, who knows? But that's just something we might want to flip-flop in case that's something that interested them and kind of pertains to, especially any Lincoln ones, but who knows? I just want to, we might want to change that.
Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, wonderful. Code of Conduct update for the twenty-twenty-six school year.
Okay, so Sarah regrettably couldn't be here tonight, but she's happy to answer any questions before the board would take action on this, which I believe will be next tonight? Oh, it is tonight, okay, I'm sorry. But I don't think there's anything controversial. She provided a memo that outlined the background information. The Parent Teacher Behavioral Advisory Committee, mouthful, met on November fourteenth, and the main updates they had to our student code of conduct had to do with language around our responsible use policy, updating our language regarding technology usage, as well as bullying, cyberbullying, harassment behavior defined to align with our board policy, as well as harassment on the basis of race, color, national origin, and, you know, really, I think, just refining the alignment to our board policies that have been updated on these topics. I, the entirety of the code of conduct is in your board packet, so if there are any particular questions, we can answer, including within the sort of code of conduct, the board, or the committee members. So you can see that on the acknowledgements page, page two.
Any questions or thoughts about the student code of conduct? Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
And then our FOIA report.
Okay, so we have none to report.
Okay, well, that's obviously very short. And that brings us to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Who did finances?
Oh, good question. I believe it was Pam.
I did finances, and they're fine.
They're fine.
Just fine?
They're fine.
Member called.
Yes. Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Cho?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have some unfinished business, which relates to the Cook County land acquisition proposal of the landed front of Westbrook on Bussy Road. I believe we discussed this at our last meeting. Are there any updates or thoughts?
No, no, we discussed, I think it was two months ago, the lawyers have been working together on getting it all done. But just as a reminder, it's there, it's really they're renting the land for, I guess you can think of it that way, for five years, to do the construction on Bussy Road. Really, it's about the entrances to Westbrook. The one thing we're still working with the county on is just doing whatever we can to make sure that we're part of the conversation when they're ready to see, I mean, if it's during the school year, then how can we work together to make sure we have access for buses and parents and everybody that needs it? So we will work with them, but that's it.
Okay, and I guess, have we done yet, or do we plan to do any kind of community education, right, around, hey, this is going to be a bit of a disruption, we're trying to minimize?
Yeah, we, right now, it's just very rough on when it might be. So as soon as we get better timing, we will absolutely put it out to parents with diagrams, and this is what it's going to look like, and here is the traffic flow if it's different, and just to let them know, it might end up being around the time. We also have construction going on, so it might all be at the same time and very interesting. But we just, I think they hope for, you know, in a year, but I'm not sure. And we've obviously asked for the summer if possible.
Sure, well, we don't, I mean, given how the county's been about giving us our tax money, we can't necessarily be sure how that's going to play out. Okay, are there any questions, thoughts about that?
I just had a question, just, and maybe, I don't know how I missed this, but it looks like in this item in Board Docs, the recommended action is going back to the consent agenda recommended action. Does anyone else see that? Just something we should clean up later.
Oh. I can update it now. Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay. I should have caught that sooner, but I.
Okay. Just to be clear, we have not already approved this on the consent agenda.
Correct.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we're talking about doing now. Okay, but thank you for pointing that out. Was there anything else?
I had one question.
Yeah.
On the last document, and there might have been another document that says it too, but it says the president and board secretary hereby authorized and directed to sell the school district's interest. They said sell a couple of times, but then they say it's temporary. So it just seemed kind of odd, the wording, I'm just, for me.
I can, I can double-check, it was, the lawyers kind of working together on it, and so I'm not sure if they view it as sell for five years. But I, I confirmed for sure that we're not selling the land, that it is five years.
It's just wording of it.
Correct. So I, I don't, I don't know the answer, I just, I know, yeah, that they had worked it, he said, this is what we have, and it's very specific that it's for five years to really rent.
Yeah, I know it says temporary in their things, but when they said sell.
Correct.
Like, you're selling, it's like, not selling.
I understood it to mean selling access, right?
Because it does say temporary, temporary easement is checked, it's not permanent.
Right.
Yeah, that makes more sense, the selling of access would make sense.
So.
Definitely temporary.
Certainly clear, I mean, it is in writing, you never want to.
And that last one, it does, I don't see the access part, just that certified resolution. But anyway.
Okay.
I can double-check.
All right, so absent those clarifications, are we ready to take action on this proposal? Okay, Chris, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to, let's see, I guess, approve the Cook County land acquisition agreement? So moved?
Second.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Cho?
Yes.
Member Kwalcik?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. That brings us to community comments. I am assuming there are none. So we will move on to new business, adopting the twenty-twenty-four tax levy. So any further discussion we need to have? Third time's the charm. You want to say anything? Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, I guess, adopt the twenty-twenty-four tax levy.
So moved. Second. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Cho?
Yes.
Member Kwalcik?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. And now we have the task of approving the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. Again, I think this was something that we reviewed last time. Are there any questions, thoughts about the calendar? Okay, if I can have a motion to approve the calendar for next school year.
So moved. Second. Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Cho?
Yes.
Member Kwalcik?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. That brings us to board discussion regarding the Board Governance Committee. Corinne, I will pass it to you to give any additional updates or thoughts about the work of the committee.
That's my bad. But we have Eileen and Chris and Corinne, who are going to head the board as, no, it's Jen and Chris and Corinne. Surprise, this is what you're going to do. Jen and Chris and Corinne are going to be the spearheaders of our governance committee. And we discussed in previous meetings, the work of this committee will be largely to help us get like some policies or just practice guidance in place for developing all of us as board members and, you know, providing training or like succession planning, for lack of a better term, in terms of the executive roles, helping members who are interested in those roles understand what that involves and, and making sure, you know, those who step into them are prepared to take on those responsibilities, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mary for the many, many doodle polls that she sent out trying to find some times that would work for us. It's a lot of work to get everybody together at the same point in time. So our first governance meeting is tentatively scheduled, at least it was, and mine is scheduled, woo, for January seventh at 10:00 AM, which is very exciting. I was going to put together a, sort of a brief agenda for the meeting, just sort of kind of narrow our efforts since we have the hour, so we can actually get cooking right away. And was going to look at the feedback that we got during the board self-evaluation meeting, that that was really a place to, to kick off our work, is some of the issues that we had brought up, that we had brought up or had come up in that particular meeting. So that's, hopefully, we will, not hopefully, but we are going to meet and we will have a report back in February.
Sounds good. Any questions or thoughts about the governance committee, other than we're excited and looking forward to? Yes, branching out into this committee work and we'll see how it goes. Okay, so that brings us to communications, NSSO report.
Yes, the governing board met on Wednesday, December fourth. We approved the work for the Kirk HVAC project, which you heard me talk about last month, for just over seven million dollars. And recall that that was way down from our initial estimates. So really nice work by the NSSO team to sharpen their pencils and get that down, which is great. And thank you all for your consideration of this last month and giving me the go-ahead to vote yes on behalf of the board. Much appreciated. The really interesting stuff going on with NSSO though is the development of the strategic plan, which occurred over two full-day meetings, December third and December tenth. Our district was very well represented. We had Mary and Jason and Sarah. I was just kind of there for, you know, I was tagging along, but no, we, it was really great, you know, to see just all the different stakeholders involved with NSSO, the staff members, the, the administration from other member districts, the business leaders and community members. And it was just really great, you know, from the, the view I have on NSSO's board, you know, you have a certain perspective. But really getting to hear the thoughts of, of some of the other stakeholder groups was really valuable. I thought a really great couple days. We were actually able, over that two days, to narrow the areas of focus into kind of four main groups. Governance structure review. There was a lot of really good feedback, again, from the, a lot of the member district admin that, you know, they really feel like they want a bigger seat at the table and, you know, a little more of a voice within NSSO's operations, which was really great to hear. It's great input. So we're going to take a look at that. Facilities planning and assessment is the second group. Future programming needs, I mean, one of the things NSSO always strives to do is we want to offer as much programming as we can so that, you know, every student who needs those services can find them through NSSO and not have to go to outplacements or anywhere else. And, and at the same time of trying to maintain that breadth is maintaining the quality of those offerings as well. So, so being able to look at, you know, what are the needs of our students of the future going to be? And how can we make sure to, you know, to be there when that happens and not have to react is a third area. Lots, obviously lots to do there. And then staff retention and support was the fourth area. So the next steps are to kind of take these four areas and, and the core team, which I'm a part of, will work to then develop action items and metrics that will go along with this and have the governing board approve that strategic plan. At, I think the February meeting is when that will happen, but, but the timing of that is good because it will then give the admin team time to kind of gear up for next year to figure out, well, what do we need to do to hit the ground running when the next school year starts? So very exciting stuff. Mary and Jason, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all or your experiences, if I left anything out, but it was a, it was a very lovely couple days, so I was glad to do it. And our next meeting is Wednesday, January eighth.
Okay, thank you so much. Ed Foundation?
They have not met yet. They were supposed to meet today, I think, but they, they pushed off that meeting, maybe it was tomorrow. They're doing their grant meeting on January seventh, so that is when they will make the decisions about the grants. So that will be a very exciting day for governance and for Ed Foundation. The other piece is on April fifth is the gala, which I know I mentioned last time, but I will keep reminding you every month until April. So April fifth, Ed Foundation Gala.
Wonderful. PTO reports, let's start youngest to oldest. If we'll do Westbrook?
There hasn't been a meeting since our last board meeting.
Okay. Quick and easy. Fairview?
Our last meeting was canceled. Next one's January thirteenth.
Oh, okay. Lyons?
We don't have a December board, um, PTO meeting, but the next one is January thirteenth at 7:00 PM.
Okay, Lincoln?
Yes, so Lincoln, Lincoln's last PTO meeting was actually yesterday, Monday, the sixteenth. So first, just as some background, everyone here at the table knows this, but in case anyone's listening. So one of the goals of our district equity leadership team dealt was to enhance the school climate and culture at Lincoln. And so to that end, Lincoln launched a program to recognize and reward positive behavior among their students in a way that also helps to promote school spirit or school pride. And so one way that it works is that students can earn points for their positive behaviors and then spend those points at a school store. So I say all this to say that last night, Mr. Jonas brought some of the things that students can use their points for when they get their rewards. So it was like Lincoln hats, Lincoln t-shirts, Lincoln sweatshirts, Lincoln water bottles. So he brought all that in, so the PTO can see. He did mention that seventh grade is in the lead in terms of earning points. And he also mentioned that they're currently looking at the data to see if or how the program might be associated with some of the positive behaviors that they're hoping to see, so stay tuned for that. During their teacher's report, Ms. Hollis shared that the PTO, that the teachers and staff really appreciated the food provided by the PTO during the conferences and they were really grateful for all of that. And she also shared, which we talked about tonight, that the staff is currently giving feedback about the new Lincoln, both the design and comments about the learning spaces. So she talked about that yesterday. And finally, Lincoln's Random Acts of Kindness Committee is coordinating with Member Cho to hold a blood drive. So I believe officially it'll be held on February twenty-seventh from three to seven PM and it'll be run by some Prospect High School students who are former Lincoln students. So there'll be some more details to come. And their next PTO meeting, Monday, January twenty-seventh at 6:30.
Can I just say they, it's partnering with my children. So it's not with me, it is with Molly and John as part of a campaign that they are in the midst of, along with one other community member who has a significant need around blood donations. And so the, the three of us have come together to do this, so.
Wonderful. Glad we could kind of collaborate and spread our resources. That brings us to board president report. We were talking just a moment ago about professional development in the context of the board governments, governance committee, professional development for board members. And one of the opportunities we have every year is to attend what we affectionately call the Triple I Conference, where many of us, you know, will spend the weekend in Chicago, learning all kinds of things about, you know, trends in contracts for school board members and things like that. This year, we had the opportunity of having one of our own lead a presentation at that conference. And so I just want to congratulate you again. I know we mentioned it ahead of time, but now that it's after the fact, Corinne, for putting that presentation together and. And I unfortunately was not able to attend this year, but I'd love if anybody has the opportunity for, you know, wanting to share their experiences at the conference or Corinne's presentation in particular, we'll put her on the spot.
It was sold out, standing room only.
And not just because, I'm sure they put you in one of the very smallest ballrooms, right?
No, like it wouldn't, we would need a bigger room if we're going to do it again. It was great. It was really heartening to see the number of unbelievably nerdy people that wanted to talk TIPS at nine o'clock or ten o'clock in the morning on a Saturday. It was just, it was beautiful. It was my people. So it went great, lots of great feedback. As I said, standing room only, it was, it was awesome. There was one thing, there's a bunch of stuff that I, I went to see and do that was really terrific, great opportunities for learning. There was one particular session that I attended with Jen, actually, about community engagement and parent engagement and volunteer opportunities particularly. And there was a school district, the number escapes me entirely right now, that had done some really brilliant work on advertising and soliciting volunteer, volunteers from their parent community in really giving very clear opportunities and listings of what was available. And I, yes, I still have the information available from that, so I'm happy to pass it along to administration. But it was one of those, I was like, ah, like that's the kind of thing that we get out of Triple I is like, yes, we could totally use that. Yes, that's a fantastic idea. I want to bring that back.
For sure. Jen?
I believe it was District Thirty-three, I think that's correct. But Heather, they were definitely your people. So if, if I'm right, I think that would be a good person to collaborate with. They had a really cool menu idea for, for collaboration. I also really appreciated the half-day conferences that we went to on Friday and got some really great things on, from that experience too. So I really appreciate the opportunity to have that kind of learning too.
Anybody else want to share about their experience? Okay.
Corinne's presentation was awesome, I'll just say that. It was, it was great. And, and not just because Corinne was leading it. It was, I thought the entire panel was, was great and it was awesome having, you know, both lawyers and legislators. And, and it was very interesting to hear that we're not the only ones frustrated by TIPS, you know? It's, it is, it is always nice to hear that, so.
Actually, we learned that some people have it worse.
That is true. That is a good point. So great job, Corinne.
Misery loves company, I guess, right? So good to know we're not alone in that. And then I guess just my last comment, we're having this meeting on a Tuesday night because school will dismiss for winter break on Friday, right? So not to push it too close to the end of the first half of the year. We moved our meeting a little bit early. And so in light of the upcoming holidays, I have some gifts for Mary and Roberta, just to thank you for all of your work on behalf of the board and in furtherance of our, you know, of our work support. Roberta, especially, like you said over there, and you take all of our notes and you prepare the meetings and they're cohesive and, you know, easy to understand. And not only that, but right, the, the doodle polling and the coordinating of all the random things or the crazy thoughts that I'll have that I'll be like, can we do this? Can you pull together a bunch of papers that maybe we'll look at at some point? Because it was just a thought. So anyway, I, I will give those to you now. Yeah. And actually, while I'm doing that, we don't have a need for closed session, so I will happily entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Cho?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful holiday season, a very restful break, and we'll see you back here in January in the new.